Patrick Gordon, Principal Sunapee Central Elementary School.
Amanda Kewatt, Director of Student Services.
Megan Wade, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Taylor Goodspeed, Student Representative for Sunapee Middle High School.
Amanda Sears, School Board.
Elise Lazzat, School Board.
Carrie Floss, School Board.
Andy Nichols, School Board.
Jennifer Anderson, School Board.
Us holding this with her gun.
We can stay up. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, our nation under God, with all authority and justice.
We are going to look for approval of the school board meeting minutes and we'll look for one for the minutes of October second, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October second, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion for the minutes of October second, twenty twenty four, non-public meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October second, twenty twenty four, non-public meeting.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion on the minutes of October twenty second, twenty twenty four, policy meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Moving on forward to the agenda review. We are all set. It's time for the public forum in accordance with Policy E D H. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, move on. Uh, we're moving on to the presentation of the S P T O Booster Club. Clear?
Hi, everybody, and this is Jennifer Correa. I'm working on the Booster Club tonight just to go over a little overview of kind of what the group does and, um... Um, so just a couple of things, um, that for those of you that don't know, the Sunapee Middle High School Booster Club supports a wide range of athletic programs and extracurricular activities. One of the things I think people get caught up in is that it only supports athletic teams. And while we do support athletic teams, it does much more. Some of the programs that it supports are up to four annual scholarships for S M H S graduates, um, some support financially for the Gettysburg trip, uh, support of the theater club, youth club, garden club, teacher appreciation week, uh, special events such as the solar eclipse last year, um, we supported that by buying any solar eclipse classes. And those are just a few of the things that we support. So it goes well beyond, um, the athletic teams that we support. The Booster Club works to foster and enrich educational environment at the school by promoting school involvement in a variety of pursuits. Booster Club helps provide students with valuable opportunities to engage in team building, skill development, and personal growth in and out of the classroom. We have just wrapped up a very successful fall season with our concession stands of both soccer and volleyball. This is our primary source of funding for the programs that we do support. Um, and now we are turning our attention to the winter sports season, um, where we will be providing concessions for both basketball teams' games. Uh, this year we were fortunate to get a group of new members joining the Booster Club. Um, as with any group, we're always looking for, um, new members to help out. All parents and family are welcome to join the group at any time, um, and we're always looking for additional help for the Booster concessions. And of course, go into any suggestion, any suggestions for other offerings we can provide to foster the spirit and sense of community that we do have, um, within Sunapee schools. Any questions?
I can only just say from having my kids in many, uh, sports throughout the years, I have to say Sunapee is top notch compared to many of the schools we know. Just saying that through traveling around the state, New Hampshire, going to many schools with my kids in sports, Sunapee by far has the best concession stand. Happy people, great food, um, from bumper stickers to hats. I just think that you guys do an amazing, wonderful job. And then just through, you know, so many people volunteering and helping what you're able to give back to the school and everything, it's, it's just probably just one of the best ones I've seen in the whole state. So, great job.
Yeah, thank you. And we're looking to, um, there's a couple of things I think we'd like to add, um, you know, to basketball season this year, kind of just to get more crowd involvement and definitely more involvement from our, um, our rec kids, um, just to get them right to the game and maybe do some halftime events and things like that, so, yeah.
I have to say, oh, I'm sorry, the only place I know that actually has picnic tables by the concession stand.
How's your, um, your, so you said your membership has increased. Are you guys doing well getting volunteers or is that a struggle still?
Oh, I mean, I think it's always a little bit of a struggle, but we, um, have a pretty engaged group of sixth grade parents.
Let's see.
For, um, you know, Thomas is in the grade, um, a lot of the parents haven't been involved, which is awesome.
Um, so we definitely have had an uptick, um, and they, um, some of the parents also provided a lot of, I don't know if you attended any soccer games this fall, you definitely saw pot meals and
they really knocked it out of park with macaroni cheese and homemade soups and, um, and we did well, you know, and there were a lot of games and we were bringing in three hundred to five hundred a game. Um, and that includes some of the sessions, um, some merchandise things too, but, um, yeah, definitely very successful. Um, and I expect the same for basketball. Uh, we get a pretty good crowd, um, at the concession stand for those games as well.
Do you feel like people know enough about what Booster Club does, like throughout the school community? Like, do you, do they know what you guys support?
I, I mean, I think we're constantly working on that. I, I still think a lot of people say, well, my kids don't play sports or, um, I mean, the fact is, much like the S P T O, it's just the next arm, right? For the middle high schools, so, um, you're a member whether you know it or not, you know, every parent here is already in the Booster Club. It's just how, how well you want to get engaged. Um, but we, you know, we do have, um, I think we're increasing awareness. Um, one of the goals, you know, I personally have for the Booster Club is to just keep catching families as they come out of fifth grade and into sixth grade and, and educate them on what we do.
Yeah, because I, like, it took a while before I even knew the breadth of what you guys support, like what you guys, like what the Booster Club supported, right?
And, and that's part of the problem. We don't promote it enough, you know, like what we, what we're doing, wait, and, um, the Facebook group is definitely held. Um, I think, you know, we could have more, we've tried to get more consistent with our meetings. It's been a little hard during the soccer season because, um, a lot of our board members are also soccer parents and the games just didn't line up. So, um, we're hoping to get back on track and get more of our regular games to our meetings, which will also help people, um, that want to show up.
Is there anything that you need from, like, from us or from the school to kind of help you with?
I guess if you want to spread the word, if you, you know, if you find yourself in a conversation about the Booster Club, just let them know we do support a variety of things and it's pretty low pressure. I mean, um, we help when we can and if we can't, you know, some people may make things that didn't work their concession stand, but that's fine, you know, so there's a lot of ways to be involved with you.
I always thought, like, when, when my kids were playing, I was like, it would have been a great idea to have, like, for all of the kids that are participating, whether it's a sport or, you know, play or whatever, to, to have almost like a, put it out to families and say, like, we, we ask for every family to volunteer for one game when your kid is not playing or just something to try and get more engagement.
Yeah, and it would be nice to, and I think we'll eventually get to this place, but if the middle school parents work the high school events and the high school parents that help out the middle school events, we could really cover a lot more. I mean, we're just scratching the surface right now. We're only really able to cover most of the games, but there's a lot we could, um, you know, build.
Jen, I'm sure there's some things that we could, we'll through our Facebook account. It has a pretty big reach on it. Even if it's just advertising here with the wins games and volunteers are needed to run concession stands. I don't make sure if you're really, I think we, maybe add some of that stuff in, so it won't show what we already do. John's already moving his phone with me.
I think even just like the Did You Knows, Russ, like all of those things that they support, like, I had no idea. It took me a while to figure out what they actually supported and it's great, like, it's, it's really understated.
Yeah, yeah, no, it would be very vocal.
Is there, is there something like that goes out? I know, like, for S P T O, we do like that, we go to, like, the kindergarten day for, for parents coming from the elementary school to the middle schools to kind of explain the Booster Club?
Yeah, we, we have to catch those couple of events as, um, sixth graders come up at the beginning of the school year, um, and it's, I always think of that as a fact, like, you know. It's not very helpful, but, um, yeah, I think that, you know, catching people, um, as they come in and just, I, I myself, when, when my daughter was in sixth grade, I had no idea. I thought the Booster Club was just for high schoolers, for high, high school parents, so I didn't do a lot of it, but, um, that's not.
When you're supposed to buy snacks.
Yeah, definitely financially. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming though.
Would you prefer me to go to that mic or can I speak from my? Okay, alright. So, I'm Elise Lazzat. I am also on the S P T O, um, and we have a similar mission to the Booster Club. Um, we do do different things because it's elementary school, K through five. Um, so some of the, the pieces that the S P T O does, we do a lot of fundraisers throughout the year to help kind of feed back into the school with, um, supporting winter activity programs. We help with some of the fees, uh, students face with that. We do teacher appreciation week, uh, and then we do teacher requests. Like, one example is, uh, Girls on the Run got started last year. We kind of help support it with snacks and things like that for, for Girls on the Run. Um, we also have started doing more kind of community events. We just, uh, finished out the Fall Harvest in partnership with Dexter's Inn and Sunapee Rec, um, and coupled that with the Roy's Day. Um, so, um, we try to just do different things for families to interact with throughout the year that are low barrier and not, uh, a pull to come join the S P T O or give money. Uh, so those are kind of the bigger impactful pieces. Our biggest fundraiser is the lottery card fundraiser that a lot of the community partners in Sunapee and around have been really, um, really, uh, kind to us with, with donating and it's been a super successful fundraiser for us. We started a new one this year called Penny Wars and, and Patrick probably doesn't have, um, probably is not a fan of us with this one, um, but I think it's, uh, it, it's a little fun competition between the grades where, you know, you can bring in any bronze coins for your class and any silver coins takes points away from other classes. So they can bring silver coins in and put it in another grade's class and it takes away their points and it's kind of, we, we're going till March and the students will win like a, like a pizza party type of thing at the end and that, those will go towards the playground project too, so we're trying to help put support in the fundraising around that too. Um, so I think those are all the pieces. Jen did a much better job.
Well, you guys do remember she was.
Um, we're doing better this year. We definitely have some new faces with incoming parents from the kindergarten class. I think it's really helpful for us to go to the kindergarten orientation at the, um, end of the school year, right? It's the end of the school year in May, I think. I can't remember my timelines. Um, and we kind of just talked about what the S P T O is and it's like a no pressure. Uh, we have a lot more volunteers now than people who come regularly to our meetings. It's sort of kind of a commitment. They're later at night and little kids, you know, at home, so. Um, but I think we're definitely getting some newer faces, which is really helpful as well. So, any other questions about the S P T O or what we do or, I might have missed something. Jen used to be on our S P T O. She left us to go.
She graduated.
She graduated. It's our new one, so, yeah.
So you're working to, uh, fundraise for the elementary school playground right now? How's that going?
Um, it's going well. Uh, I think, uh, for a little bit it was a little unclear what the fundraising goal might need to be because there's been different proposals and things like that, but it seems like things are kind of, the dust is settling there, so we have a bigger, better picture of kind of the, the need, so that's been helpful.
Do you have a goal?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a million dollars anymore, so that's really helpful. Was it at one point and I was like, man, this is going to take ten years to fundraise for it.
I can update you if I need to.
Yep, so, uh...
Do people know that you're, that's what you're fundraising for?
Exactly.
We hadn't seen that.
Uh, we just started at, like, because we were like, we, we would usually be like, well, buy a coin for the playground. We, so we all, the other thing we do is we do kids vote in March and part of that is what their votes actually go towards, uh, us purchasing something for the playground. Um, last year we bought pickleball. That's what they voted on. Uh, they also voted for Patrick's hair to be pink, uh, which he did. So, uh, and so it's really helping to get them involved in kind of, you know, everyday processes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
School updates. Student representatives, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Taylor Goodspeed and I'm the student representative for the school. Over the past few weeks, our soccer, volleyball, and golf seasons have come to a close. The back hallway was just reopened, which has made the transitions between classes much easier. Our empty bowls project, organized as a senior project with the help of Service Club, is tomorrow night at delivery. And this Sunday, some of our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders will be headed to Washington, D.C. for a week at the close-up trip. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
If there's any questions.
Thank you. Uh, S C E S.
So first, I would like to, like, say, I actually do love the penny wars because there's nothing more comical than a kindergarten who's been annoyed by watching older kids, um, dropping in coins to take away their total. They come back with a vengeance the next day like no one else. Um, so I've, I've learned a lot about kindergarten from this event. Um, playground, I can give you a quick update. We plan on it. Next month, my ideal goal would be to bring to you, uh, for your, they don't have to act on it, right, Russ?
Sorry.
For a playground, would they have to act on it or no?
Uh, no.
No, just for your, uh, your knowledge, um, our playground proposal, we moved through five iterations with one company. Um, we've gotten what I think is probably the final before we just kind of give our last notes to get some updates, some little things here and there, and then be able to go out and start doing, as you alluded to, Carrie, a lot, giving the information out there for people. Uh, this one's price tag is coming in, I want to say it's three fifty, three eleven, which is considerably lower than any of them. Uh, we did a lot of redesigning this one, talked about exactly what we wanted, um, and got down to brass tacks and found a lot of compromise. So I'm feeling in a really good position right now, um, but I'll, I'll bring it December later with my intention. We'll see if they can turn it around for us. Um, in terms of, uh, the last few weeks, we had Kindness Week at our school, October seventh to eleventh. Each day has a theme, like Monday was ties us together. People wore ties. Our, uh, Friday was, uh, can you spot kindness and hope in us? Uh, always fun to see the kids' creativity and see how they get involved in it. Uh, and thank you to Natasha Hamel for just doing it, finding great ways to celebrate our community and pro-social behaviors. Um, we've had some field trips that have gone out. Kindergarten went to Riverview Farm, fourth grade went to Vins. These were tied to science and E L A units that are ongoing in the classroom. Um, and those teams have done an excellent job to find ways to reinforce learning that's happening in the classroom in an authentic way. Uh, the Sunapee Fire Department visited Students for Fire Safety Month. This year's theme focused on functional smoke alarms. So be sure to test your home smoke detectors when you go home, make sure the batteries are good, and something that a lot of our staff members were surprised about, they have an expiration date. Just thought I'd share that. They're about ten years. Um, the elementary school were really lucky to provide three, four-week intervention windows for math and, um, Betsy, I was confused which one's her real last name now. Oh, thank you. She just had, her email comes up differently. The first one ended last week and we served thirty-five students through, uh, identifying on iReady and giving them additional math support. Uh, we changed up our schedule to ensure that they could get additional math support outside of the what I need block because we were finding that a kid would need help or additional instruction in both E L A and math. And then you were flipping and flopping and trying to figure out which one to intervene with, not I. My first round of teacher observations are nearly completed and we employ some of the best teachers in the area. I'm just always blown away when I go in the classroom, seeing all the great things that are happening. Um, they pour themselves into their work. There's, they're always trying to find ways to improve and they're just tireless about collaboration to do that. Um, I'm seeing so many great things from our new educators that are in the building, uh, through my observations and I'm just excited about the remainder of the year. And that is everything I have to report, so if you have any questions.
Thank you, and moving on to S M H S.
So it's a really busy time of year. Um, we've just wrapped up quarter one, so it's hard to imagine we're already a quarter of the way into the school year, but, um, we packed a lot in the last couple of weeks, so we had our Honor Society induction ceremony recently. We did our high school and middle school spirit weeks that had lots of different dress-up days and middle school had an activity night, high schoolers had on-fire dance. Lots of great energy at those. The fire department did sessions here with our high school, our middle schoolers this year. We've had some field trips. We had our personal finance class, went and visited, uh, car dealership and learned all about car loans and what that can look like. Our Spanish class did a field trip to U N H for, um, participation in a foreign language event. Our eighth graders went to Boston on Monday and watched the Freedom Trail and, uh, saw sites that they've been learning about in social studies and reading about in English. We've had our sports awards nights where the kids really represented themselves well with nice speeches about their seasons. Tomorrow we have a veteran appreciation breakfast. So this is an annual event where we have a group of students, a Mr. Frederick, who make breakfast for the veterans and they come and then our social studies classes, students come and have question and answer sessions with the veterans. We'll have a whole school assembly tomorrow morning. Um, we have the dodgeball tournament just coming up, a little club. That's a fun Sunapee event, so that's this year. The soccer class is doing that on November nineteenth. And then our fall play will be before our next meeting, so another, um, plug for that coming up on November twenty-second and twenty-third. There'll be three shows, um, seven o'clock on Friday night, two o'clock and seven o'clock on Saturday night, and it's called Just Another Audition. So it's a play about people auditioning for play, which I promise is to be a lot of fun. And we're looking forward to our professional development day on Friday to just catch our breath a little bit, work on some of our initiatives and school goals for the year and get to some planning to head into next quarter.
Thank you. Thank you. See, we got questions. Superintendent update.
Thank you. I now know who to blame for the water jugs in the elementary school lobby. Little pet peeve, the Florias, I try to keep them clean and so we used to hold out our empty water jugs up there and there were forty of them at a time to drive nuts. So I got rid of them last year and it's like, great, locked in the school, third with the school, I'm like, why are they back?
They turned to curry.
Taylor is also here tonight on Yearbook Club Work Night, so our Yearbook Club this year has about twelve students who volunteered to put together the yearbook. The high school portion of our Yearbook Club is here working away and together we'd love to go resume that work, if that's okay?
Please, Taylor, please. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, as, as Spots have said, it has been a very busy, busy month for, uh, for October. Uh, first and foremost, ribbon cutting here Friday at one o'clock. Uh, the governor has been invited, other elected officials. Um, the great news, we'll talk a little about biomass, but biomass is running. It's great to feel a little, a little overheat. It's great to smell that little bit of wood burning in the fall. Uh, but this, the, the speed, the, the schedule, the on-time, uh, this, the whole, the whole, um, project with the E I has been seamless. Uh, I say that, not that the other project was not, we know we had a one issue with the silo, but this one hit its mark. They've gone above and beyond. They were so respectful of us being in school, respectful of our kids, um, and so I can't say enough about the work that got done and the time that is getting done, right, time for the one month. So please come, one o'clock. Everyone is welcome. Uh, right up back here, the governor, as I said, was in place as well as other elected officials. We all have cake and some cookies and some hot cider, so nothing else. You grab a cookie or a piece of cake midday. Um, what else has been going on? So the board has been working with the teachers through negotiation. Uh, we hope to have, we actually have that pretty much finalized. We're looking at some final details. Hopefully have that done before our January budget meeting. Policy committee, you're going to see a bunch of policies that we've gone through. Uh, I was with Chief Cobb last, last month and we did a review of our off-site evacuation site, which is over in Kirfshage. Uh, we, we started that budget process. We had that first meeting tonight and yesterday, I think the most exciting thing on the entire month, um, I had my first opportunity to sit with our student strategic planning committee. And there were thirteen, thirteen students in the room, uh, two were missing, uh, but we went through that SWOT analysis that we all had gone through. Um, I had, but I had allocated two hours of time. We started and we set out, round rules. Everyone was very, very professional. Once I got them past the idea that they were still in school, they get up and go to the bathroom and use their phone and get a snack and go. It just, it just flowed really nicely to a point where, if you think about when we did this, we did that SWOT analysis, I think, in two hours. We only got through two parts of the SWOT analysis in the two hours. So great feedback, some great participation, some great insights. I'm really looking forward to the next couple of meetings where we start to take that analysis, start looking at, at what their vision is for the school the next five years and having them statue it, really articulate some of those goals might be, and then some action steps. And we'll take them, that information and that'll come forward to, I don't know, call it an adult strategic planning committee, but we'll build up those goals from our strategic plan, building up their goals to build on action statements on those. So I think it's a great opportunity. I know our students were heavily involved yesterday and it was just really nice to see that level of student participation, um, and how they feel, you know, and it was very, very positive, uh, but very brief about their school and where they want to see their school go, so I appreciate all that time and effort.
Have you done that before, Russ?
Not a student, right? So that was one of my goals, is to anchor our, um, our strategic plan and student work and it's been great. So this is the first time I've ever done anything like that and it's just been a really, really great experience. We also have to start that extracurricular, uh, survey, I think probably mid, mid, mid-winter sometime to try to look at those extracurriculars as well as what the kids are doing.
Did you learn anything that surprised you? And not that you have to share what it is, but, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, it just, very inside, really, because there's stuff that you, you think you see, but then when you hear them say it, and again, very appreciative. I mean, I can't tell you how many, every one of them said something, you know, the teachers, like what makes, what's the strength, you know, was the teachers. You know, it was the teachers and the coaches and the teachers and the, you know, food service, bus drivers. You know, it's all those things that we would want them to say, but it's nice to have that reinforced that. Uh, but then when we looked at weaknesses and if you think about women who do this process, one of the things we talked about was sometimes your strengths are your weaknesses. And so class size, it's great. We have nice small class sizes. It's really great. What's a weakness? Oh, class size, because everybody knows my business. So, so great insight, you're just even better, just participation from, you know, Patrick sent me seventy, a couple more, we had a sixth grade, a twelfth grade, all in the same room. And I really just facilitated and I stepped back and said, okay, you know, you set the round rules, you put your post-it, you read your post-it notes, you explain what this means. And this time the different kids stand up and, and talk about sort of their passions and their strengths and their weaknesses in front of other kids and then other kids recognizing that? So a twelfth grade is recognizing the sixth grade. It's like, I don't know, if he was, if he was kind of, it's not, uh, thanks, I kind of appreciate it.
That's, that's cool, yeah.
That's good. Alright, moving on to school board topics.
So this is just a quick outline of some of the things. So this is just a quick outline of some of the things that we would propose, I think, and I heard from our last board meeting, so state assessment, principals will deliver that in December, and then transportation, and then we'll run the adjustment councils in February. If there's other things along the way, please let me know, and we continue to add to the list.
All right, those all look good. Policy updates, um, first readings.
So for the first readings, it's, uh, E, G, I, and J. Uh, so for E, it's really just adding some language in the crisis prevention emergency response plan around the superintendent's requirements to develop a district-wide plan, along with chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan, which is kind of just a basic address identification, inventory, disposal, et cetera. For G, it goes into AEDs, the Automated External Diffusators, and locations, and who's approved slash trained in utilizing those. And then for I, it's high school graduation policy. What really changed in here is the language around, again, the superintendent's requirement for communicating on fast foot to students, um, is a little less than the previous policy where he just has to make sure the information's out there. He doesn't have to follow up with each and every student. Um, for J is, it goes into kind of the foreign, foreign exchange student policy, student placement, um, that we have a student rep on board. One word literally changed from all board meetings to just board meetings, so it kind of just little language changes there. Um, we updated our MOU with the PD, um, around disciplinary action, um, student activities, organization, uh, work, um, so eligibility to follow kind of the New Hampshire law around eligibility for, for activities. Medication dispersment, very kind of straightforward, administering meds, Title I, family engagement, and then the form to request to use facilities. Yes, all that was covered in that first reading.
Any other review policies list?
Yep, so we just reviewed J and, uh, AK. Um, and for J, it's just talking about the requirement for students to attend school, uh, the cutoff age for students to enter Sunapee School, and then, uh, the policy around receiving, um, getting school records, student records, and then the policy for community use of facilities. Nothing really changed there.
All right, I'm ending with, uh, the withdrawal, rescinded policies.
Yep, so the code of ethics for students, we are rescinding because that information is in the athletic handbook that we also approved, and then we, uh, don't have student insurance anymore, and then the student records and access policy is again, it's just redundant because we have it somewhere else, so.
Looking for a motion to approve the first reading. Uh, the first readings, review policies, and withdrawal, rescinded policies.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Action items, approve proposed tuition agreement with Croydon twenty-four twenty-five.
So that is in your packet, that is our standard, um, tuition agreement that we have with them based upon our attendance policy, uh, excuse me, our tuition policy. Um, they had a superintendent came over late, so she definitely, I'm getting it to you right after I decide it. I'm assuming it's still good to go, but I would need you to take that. Is that, is that, no, it's an action, we need you to.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed tuition agreement with Croydon twenty-four twenty-five.
I'll second it. Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve. Croydon tuition.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed tuition rate for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So I'm not sure we're really in a motion, I think you can let me know. Um, in our tuition agreement, it talks about notifying the districts of potential increase in tuition cost. And so, as we're going through budget, all the rest of the districts are too. So this would be an opportunity for us to, um, potentially discuss increasing our tuition cost, and maybe able to notify them of a potential increase coming so they can budget appropriately for. And so one of the things that I would propose too is, given that we've been, um, around sixteen, sixteen thousand for high school and fifteen thousand for, uh, K E, maybe looking at a percentage increase for the next year, and then looking at potentially anywhere between a one or a half a percent each of the following two years, to give them an opportunity to project out. Uh, I certainly can have conversations with those superintendents and, and float some of that to them and get a, a reading from them. Uh, one of the things we wanted to make sure, this is sort of an interesting math equation. You know, districts budget a certain amount of money that they would give to their students to take as choice to be able to tuition into other schools. And I know we have districts that give as much as close to seventeen thousand, we also have districts that give fifteen thousand. And so one of the things we've always done, when we've tried to make sure that where are the conversations for kids that have choice, to be, be an option. And that option has actually served us really well. Um, we have eighty stu-, eighty tuition students this year. Those kids come in and bring a lot of real positive to our schools, and I'm going to throw a different, different sort of perspective, but not only in Sunapee. Uh, they allow us to continue to run programs, they allow, enrich conversations in classrooms. Uh, but most importantly, from a school board perspective, they bring a lot of revenue back that helps offset our, our year tax revenue goal. And so we show that every year, in our revenue page that goes out to the public, we discuss that, that I believe is such a. So, I think there's an opportunity here, uh, to increase this, but we have to be careful as we increase it not to potentially drug people on. So if the districts, it's only giving fifteen thousand, if we were to go up from sixteen to twenty thousand, now that, then potentially that parent's paying out a potpourri of five thousand dollars. We have kids that are, you know, families that have multiple kids, two, three kids, uh, in our middle high school, that, we have three kids, that's fifteen thousand dollars, I don't know, that, you know, at that point, I'm now really thinking, I just gotta go to a cheaper option, and there are cheaper options out there. You know, some of our neighboring, uh, school districts are at cheaper options because they have to, uh, based upon their agreements with those communities. So, I think it's, it's a little bit of a feeling the waters, uh, but I want you to at least engage a little of that conversation, and if you want to give me some specific direction. But maybe just giving me the direction to have some conversations with the, with the superintendents regarding, knowing that an increase is coming, and maybe just saying, we know it's gonna be at least a percent for the first year, what the other couple of years look like, we'll certainly get that to as, as we can, but you're able to budget for it.
When, Russ, when's the last time that we did it?
Uh, two years ago, we, we've, uh, we've been at these numbers for two years.
What was our previous tuition rate?
I would say fourteen and fifteen.
So we went up a thousand, and we're only talking about going up three hundred to three hundred and twenty dollars, at two percent.
At two percent.
Right. You know, so, I mean, my gut feeling is we try to shoot for two percent. That's my, that's my feeling.
I mean, I would at least say at minimum, it would be a one percent.
Right.
Potentially two, and talking with the other schools, right? Like letting them know that there's definitely an increase, but it's between the one and two percent for the first year.
Way the cost of living increases.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I was gonna say. I mean, I think a lot of work has been done in the last couple of years since, you know, we sort of took the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Committee to go after some additional tuition revenue, and I think that the district's done a really nice job with that, and that's been really helpful for us, so we do have to find the right balance, but I do think, given cost of living, operational costs going up, I don't think our tuition rates have kept pace with that, so we should have something that's in the ballpark of reasonable.
Yeah, I do believe that some of the unfortunate, uh, stuff going on in the community is that they don't understand that we're competing to get kids here. So you want to stay somewhat reasonable with what the costs are compared to other, other towns that parents can send their children. But on the same note, I think that we have such an awesome school district, um, so well-run, kids that are coming out of here are so well-educated, that I don't think it's unreasonable for this board to ask for a slightly higher premium, because I think that the, the, the parents, um, as well as up in some of the, the towns, are gonna be willing to pay a little more to have the kids come to this school. I mean, it's just a wonderful school, so I am definitely in favor of, I think starting out at two percent is great, and that gives us, you know, an understanding, and you can come back and report to us, um, how you feel that the other, uh, superintendents feel with us and the towns.
Very good. All right, appreciate that, that's very helpful.
Any other questions or concerns? All right. And we're going to move on. I will need to do a motion to approve the S M H, ask winter sports coaches and co-curricular.
I'll make a motion to approve the winter sports co-curricular coaches or positions.
I'll second it.
Any concerns, Russ?
No, I do not. We're very, very thankful that we have folks that are continuing to step forward to, uh, take on the role of coach.
Are we offering ski jumping still?
We are not, I think it's just a leftover on the form, and ski jumping is off the table. We do have one student that participates in ski jumping as a full student over in another year.
Oh, okay. What about JV basketball for girls, there's no?
So we are, um, I think they're trying to fill out the numbers, and then based upon numbers.
I see, okay.
Very courage. Good job, shall I go?
Never played in my life, but sure. Yeah.
You should have said that.
Like, wait, wait, do they use a popper ball?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Information items, NASDAQ twenty-four twenty-five enrollment projection.
So here is our yearly NASDAQ projection for twenty-fourth of last school year. Uh, it is, I think it goes live on our website today, uh, or tomorrow morning. I think if you follow along and you look at what their past projections were, you can see they've been fairly accurate. Um, which they do have us projected to go up, uh, over the next eight to ten years. Uh, I think that with those projections out, they have us going with five hundred. Um, I don't know, sure, maybe. Um, maybe a piece of that would have to do with some of our tuition students, as we just had that conversation. Uh, it would be certainly nice to think that we're gonna continue to rise. Uh, I've been very happy to the fact that we've kind of leveled off and maintained that level, and so that I do appreciate. Um, it does show though, in there on page, uh, ten, um, it does show our, our increase in our tuition students from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, so thirty-three, forty-five, forty-seven, sixty-five, seventy-nine. So we do continue to draw, uh, from those, those students that have districts that do offer choice. Um, and our, our Sunapee numbers continue to sort of hover in that three twenty, three thirty range. Uh, K twelve, and then you had preschool on there, they bump up a little bit from there. The speech information, it always has been asked for, uh, is, again, if it's not already up, it will be up on our website tomorrow morning. I think we just ready to turn it on after you sign it.
Thank you. I believe we've covered that SMA file last, but they're.
Yeah, I don't think, unless you have any questions, the audience, it's up, it's running, they're happy. We'll celebrate that Friday, we heard the students, the students say that they're happy at their hallway now. I don't think they're really that far out of the window. But it is, you know, it is now back in, back in action, so happy to move on.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
Make a motion to approve the manifest as stated.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Agenda items for next meeting?
So I'm gonna have a second review of policy, to give you a, a report back on tuition. So again, I have a state testing presentation by our principals. Uh, no, I don't have too much of budget at that time, well, because of course, yeah, we might have some budget. Yeah, we might have some budget, a lot of that stuff.
Will we have contracts yet or no? Is it more January? Negotiating, yeah, yes, sir.
Um, is that just, probably closer to January.
All right, uh, we do not have any requests to go on to, I say ninety-one, A three, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, everybody.